And this guy came over and talked to us. Yeah, he looked in the other direction. And the lady next to us said, "He's on Hamilton Street." And that's the same street. So we knew where he was going. But, um, um, and, um, we, and, uh, so the guy came over and talked to us. He said, "Yeah, I remember your grandfather." And I always remember Mildred, which is my grandpa's second wife. It was my grandmother and everything, so, yeah.
That's interesting.
Hey, I'm gonna have you slide here. Because Donna's not coming. I'm just gonna sit in this chair.
Okay.
What was it? You guys from Donna's area?
I got Donna's stuff. You get up to Donna.
Before I forget, is this anybody's in here? It's been here for like four weeks. No, that's a different one. That one was Anderson's. I found that.
All over northeastern.
Okay.
All these, November 15, 2022.
Give a jab on your heads, please. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to wake up to another glorious morning. As we meet today to do the business for the people of DeKalb County, we ask for your strength, wisdom, and guidance that our decisions may be just and proper and beneficial to all. We're grateful, Lord, again, for being here, and we know there's difficult times all across the world, and we ask for your strength and your hand in guiding many, many people that really need a lot of help here. And we are so blessed to be here in the positions that we are. We're here also today to honor the memory of Don Kaufman, a great councilman and good friend of the county, and we're grateful for his presence and all he has done. And we ask for this in Jesus' name. Amen. Missioner.
Opposed, same. That motion is carried. All right. Additional appropriations. We have a request from the commissioners for two different items. And give me just a second here. And can we take both items together as one? All right. The one is for medical supplies and the other one is for equipment. Department is Commissioners. The fund name is 8950, the American Rescue Plan. Account of two, this is an additional appropriation to account 22260, medical supplies in the amount of $10,000. And 44430, equipment in the amount of $1,850.46. Amount represent anticipated expenditures through what month and year? December of 2022. How will the appropriations be used? The $10,000 is for the 2022 flu vaccine used by the Health Department. And the $1,850.46 is for an additional monitor for the audiovisual system in the Commissioners' Court. And Dave, Amy, Amy, it would be that monitor right there. What they're adding.
Are you gonna place it?
It actually swings around in the front, so the person that's running the meeting doesn't have to move out of the way of the screen. They'll be able to see what you guys can see on the screens.
Next time we have to actually do stuff and I don't have to be... That was our plan for... So we won't have to use it.
And then specific cost of items and how costs were determined include calculations for payroll accounts, and that is listed above. Explain if these will be recurring expenses, not at this time. Were these included in the annual budget request? If not, why not? No ARP, the American Rescue Plan dollars not completely determined at the time of the budget. And will other related additional appropriation requests be necessary? If so, explain possibly if other American Rescue projects are approved. Not, we have not yet approved a full expenditure of all of the American Rescue funds. So was this discussed with the department liaison? And the answer to that was yes. It was discussed with Councilwoman King as the liaison to the Auditor's Office and with me as their liaison to the Commissioners. This was submitted by Susan Sleeper. So if I can have a motion to approve these two additional appropriations. Then moved by Councilwoman Dembski. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Van Wy. Discussion. Comment from the public? All those in favor of passing these two additional appropriations signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. That motion is carried. Now, if you'll give me just a second. Transfers. All right. We have a number of transfers here. First one is coming from the Recorder. These are all, these are all for the County, for County General. One is from the Recorder. Your council members. Susan, that's yours. Dear DeKalb County Council members, Recorder's Office has found the need to transfer funds to cover payroll for part-time second deputy wages. Fund 1001.10750. Second Deputy Fund 1001.11203 has more than adequate funds to cover the wages for the remainder, remaining year. Recorder is requesting $12,000 be transferred from Fund 1001.11203 to Fund 1001.10750. Should there remain a deficit in the future in Fund 1001.10750 to adequately cover payroll for part-time second deputy wages, Recorder will prepare change forms to pay shortfall of wages from Fund 1189.10750. Should you desire further explanation, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your courtesy and consideration. Sincerely, Lita Hollinger, DeKalb County Recorder. I have a motion to approve this transfer. Been moved by Councilman Van Wy. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Yard. Third discussion. Comment from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor of this transfer signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. That motion is carried. The next transfer comes to us from the Sheriff's Department. And there are one, two, three, four. There are five transfers here. Can we take them all at once? Requesting to transfer monies. Transfer $25,000 from Captain, Account 1001.11220 to Overtime, Account 1001.11050. $25,000 from Patrolman III, 1001.11240 to Overtime, 1001.11050. $25,000 from Patrolman V to Overtime, Account Number 1001.11242 to Account, to Overtime, Account 1001.11050. Transfer $25,000 from Patrolman X to Overtime, Account 1001.11247 to Overtime, Account 1001.11050. We are request, we are requesting these transfers due to the low balance in overtime. We have spent all of the budgeted $150,000 for 2022 and are averaging $9,000 to $11,000 per pay cycle in overtime due to being short-staffed and covering PTO time. With 11 more pay periods, hopefully $100,000 will make it to the end of the year. I appreciate your assistance in this matter. Sincerely, Dave Cher, Sheriff. Is there a discussion? Well, first of all, is there a motion to approve these transfers? Then moved by Councilman Van Wy. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Prosser. Discussion.
How short are they? Yeah.
Yeah. A, after the primary, a lot of people left. Both in the kitchen and in other places.
Person.
That was one of them because the entire kitchen staff quit. Offhand, I do not know. Do you know how many were down?
I know.
I personally only know one, Amy. And I knew that they had somebody that was about ready to come back from, uh, deputy, from school, so. There were, there were some turnover, but... There's, there's short jailers also. Well, I'll tell you what. Let me, look, since there is a second letter and there are like five of these transfers, let me read these other letters. Transferring $35,000 from care of inmates to petroleum products. We are requesting to transfer $35,000 from care of inmates to petroleum products due to the current balance of $20,789 in petroleum products. May lastest invoice was $10,903.24. June invoice was $12,783.80. And July invoice, $11,337. If the remaining four invoices for this year are less than $13,000 each, a transfer should cover the invoices for the remaining, remaining of 2022. Appreciate your assistance in this manner. Dave Cher, Sheriff.
Can you say that again? 179? Remind me what that...
Um, fund are under their location. And it's for when inmates are at other places and we have to pay medical or things like that. It's just when they're being cared for at a different place. But they're still under our watch that we have to pay. Sometimes we have to pay, like probation, I believe, has also has to pay. And they have, because they have to pay for... Now, we end up, the sheriff ends up getting most of theirs back. So it's kind of like an in and a, we have to have it there so we can pay it, but then it comes back to us.
And we are not housing inmates in other counties like we were a year ago. That expense is down quite a bit. All right. Do I have a motion in a second on this?
Yes. Motion in a second.
All right.
And reminder for your mics when you're talking.
Is there any other discussion from the council on this? Comment from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor of these transfers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion is carried. Next comes to us from the Surveyor's Office. This is also from the General Fund. Dear Councilmembers, I hereby request a transfer of the following funds. $1,000 from Vehicle Maintenance and Repair Services, Account 1001.33610 to Petroleum Products and Supplies, Account Number 1001.22210. This request is to cover the cost of fuel for the department pickup trucks due to the increase in petroleum costs and will hopefully cover costs for the remainder of 2022. Should you have any questions or desire additional information, please contact me respectfully, Michael Klein, Surveyor. And I have a motion to approve this transfer. Been, been moved by Councilman Van, uh, by Councilman Yard and seconded by Councilman Van Wy. Discussion.
Do you have both trucks running? Mike?
Yeah.
You got your new truck going? And this will cover fuel for both your vehicles?
Any other discussion? Comment from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion is carried. Next.
Yep, I can answer about sheriff now. There are seven road deputy openings and six, um...
Jailers.
Jailer intake, things like that.
Uh, this next one is from the Lit Public Safety, our County Sheriff Fund. Central Communications is requesting the following funds transfer from the following fund. We request a transfer $2,200 from 1170.33630, maintenance contracts to Account 117044430. Equipment. This transfer is to help cover the cost of the new Right Stuff timekeeping software. Thank, thank you for your consideration, Brian Humbarger. And Central Communications is utilizing the timekeeping system that we installed out at, uh, out at Community Corrections. They're actually, the two of them are actually working out the bugs so that we can utilize it throughout the county. At some point, I would imagine that some of these expenses will either fall under the Auditor's Office or we split it up to all the departments. I don't know how we'll handle that in the future.
Or we'll just put it under you.
You could do that. Since I'm the one who requested it, that's a good thing. All right. Can I have a motion to approve this transfer? Been moved by Councilwoman Dembski. Second by Councilman Kraft. Discussion. Comment from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor of this transfer signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same. That motion is carried. And the next one, the last one, is a transfer within the Auditor's ineligible deduction fund. Comes to us from the Auditor. Dear Councilmembers, please consider the following transfer to Other Service Fees Account within the Auditor's ineligible deductions fund budget. The transfer is needed to pay for the Beacon-Snyder Agreement already approved by the Commissioners to allow the Auditor's Office to accept exemption deduction forms electronically. Amount is $6,700 from Furniture and Fixtures, 1216.44410 to Other Service Fees, 1216.32780. Respectfully submitted, Susan Sleeper, Auditor. I have a motion to accept this, or to approve this transfer.
They'll move.
Then moved by Councilman Van Wy. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Dembski. Discussion. Susan, what, what exactly does this? I mean, is that the only explanation? Is this allows you, your office, to do something electronically?
Uh, well, it'll be like, people will be able to go online at home or title companies or closing companies. They'll be able to go online wherever they're at into the Beacon-Snyder that we, that GIS uses. And they'll be able to actually fill out the homestead and mortgage deductions and over 65s and the deductions remotely versus coming here. If we need something, like with over 65s, there'll be a requirement that you have to submit, like your most recent 1040 or something before things will be approved. And it will all come into one auditor email inbox. And then our current ones that we have will be able to get into the system as well. So we can be completely electronic with the forms instead of all the paper.
But, and the big point being that they can do this remotely.
Absolutely.
They don't have to come in here. They can do it.
No.
Okay, good.
And I'm sure we'll still have some come in. Some that don't have computers, that don't want to do that way. I made sure, they wanted me to use iPads. I didn't want to use an iPad here. I made sure that IT and Beacon got together and I can actually, well, my team will actually be able to like physically hand somebody a stylus instead of trying to get them to sign with their finger because not everybody, that's not easy. So they'll actually get to sign on a screen with a stylus like a pen.
A lot of times title companies will do for buyers and sellers. Unless it's the over 65 or someone having a sale on there.
It'll be huge for the mortgage and homesteads especially. Because we, a lot of times, well, we kind of got this nipped, but we would have title companies bring us in like stacks of mortgage exemptions of time. They would hold them all in their drawers and then bring us like 100 in December. And we have to have them on by the end of December. So I kind of got that stopped, but this will just make it easier.
Like a signup fee or ongoing contract?
It will be an ongoing, it'll be a yearly thing. It won't be as much, I don't think, after this. We do have a couple setup fees. And then there'll be a yearly contract that I will be able to fund out of my, um, my own auditor funds, not the county general. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion. I have a second. Any other discussion? Comment from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor of this transfer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion is carried. All right. That brings us to... Do you have the actual resolution?
I do. And I have two so that you can sign two of them.
All right. All right. The joint resolution of the DeKalb County Commissioners, Resolution Number 2022R17, DeKalb County Code 41337, and DeKalb County Council, Council Resolution 2022RCC-7, Don Kaufman Memorial. Whereas Don Kaufman has, has been a true and faithful servant of the citizens of DeKalb County for over 15 years, serving as a Commissioner, Drainage Board Member, Chairman of the Northeast Indiana Solid Waste District Member, and Hamilton District Board Member throughout that time. And whereas Don Kaufman exhibited his vision and commitment to the care of those less fortunate and in need of housing with his support and leadership of the operation of Sunny Meadows Residential Facility at the County Farm. And whereas Don Kaufman was a leader for years in the agricultural community in DeKalb County, both during the county active operation of the County Farm and more recently overseeing the county's leasing of its farm ground. And whereas Don Kaufman further showed his vision and commitment to the citizens of DeKalb County in his support of the county airport development to one of the leading general aviation airports in the state of Indiana and supporting local economic development with the creation and funding of our local economic development organization and acting to attract new industry, Family Dollar Distribution Center, Walmart Distribution Center, and many others, expansion of existing industries, Steel Dynamics, and retaining existing industry. And whereas Don Kaufman recognized the need to provide services for our citizens in a centralized area of our county seat, which helped lead to the restoration of our beautiful courthouse and acquisition and renovation and construction of 220 East 7th Street for expanded county offices. And whereas in addition to his services for, for and on behalf of the county, Don Kaufman operated his own farming operation and founded and operated for years his successful Kaufman Well Drilling Incorporated. And whereas Don Kaufman exhibited his commitment to education of our youth with his many years of service to the Hamilton School District Board, now therefore it is hereby resolved by unanimous joint resolution of the DeKalb County Commissioners and the DeKalb County Council that Don Kaufman be commended for his unselfish commitment, vision, and service to the citizens of DeKalb County over a period in excess of 15 years. Be it further resolved that the DeKalb County Commissioners and the DeKalb County Council convey their sincere sympathy to Don Kaufman's wife, Judith, his five daughters and son and their spouses, as well as his 16 grandchildren. Be it further resolved that the DeKalb County Commissioners and DeKalb County Council hereby declare September 12, 2022, and September 13, 2022, as official mourning for their departed friend and colleague, and further direct that the flags of our country, state, and county be flown at half-mast during these days as a signal to all of our respect for Don Kaufman. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread among the permanent minutes and records of the DeKalb County Commissioners and the DeKalb County Council and that copies be sent to the family of Don Kaufman now that he has met his demise and joined his Lord and Savior. And that copies of this resolution also be sent to the surrounding appropriate municipal bodies in our county and the surrounding area. Adopted and proclaimed this 13th day of September 2022. And I have a motion to approve Joint Resolution 2022RCC-7.
They'll move.
Been moved by Councilman Van Wy, or Councilman Van Wy. Is there a second? By Councilman Kraft. Discussion.
Rick, I'd just like to add a couple things because I had the honor and pleasure to serve with Don over the years when he was a Commissioner and I was on the council. And just a few points here that I'd like to bring out about Don. First of all, he was a gentleman at all times there. And he always looked out for his constituents in the county. He took it extremely serious there. He was respected and not feared. And those are great qualities when you can be a gentleman and be respected for your opinion and your opinion. and your professionalism and not be feared. And Don was always, always approachable, always in control. And I don't think I ever saw Don rattled about anything. I'm not saying he wasn't probably upset inside, but he, he kept his cool demeanor all the time. But those are great qualities of leadership that we don't always get in somebody and it's so lacking today there. He knew his stuff. He always knew what was going on. He knew his issues and he did his homework. I don't think Don was ever caught off, off guard on about anything, on any issue that was ever brought before the council and, and I believe as, as a Commissioner there. He served the county well, both personally and professionally, and it was an honor to serve with him. And his leadership will always be noted and he was a great role model. And we're, we're lacking that in so many different ways today, but Don was a great guy and that's, that's the best way I can describe it. He was a great guy and a great friend and we're honored to have known him and had him here on the, as a Commissioner.
Anyone else?
I do want to, I do want to say that I so appreciated Don because, you know, while, while Don and I worked together for quite a few years, me not being in this position but being on the outside or being with the, with EMS, we could, we could always work together. We didn't have to agree all the time. And when we didn't, and, and Mike knows that, we, we could discuss things and we could walk away still friends. And that's, that's the way it should be. We all can't, we all can't think the same way and believe the same way all the time. It just isn't possible. But to walk away as friends is a great contribution that he made to us. So we did, do appreciate the time he spent here with us. And Judith, we have these, we have these two, these resolutions here. We're going to sign them and then we're going to take a break and let's get a picture. And I just want to, I want to come up and thank you personally for the time that, you know, I know that, you know, sending him up here, I don't know, is that a good thing or a bad thing for you? We got him out of the house anyway, I know. All right. Well, we're going to go ahead and sign these things and then we'll, then we'll take a break. Send that one that way.
I think you need to vote on it.
Yeah.
Didn't you guys just?
Yeah, we'll vote here and just as soon as I can get this thing shut off.
It doesn't want to.
No, that's because it was on my computer too. All right. We have the motion. We have the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion is carried. All right. Let's go ahead and get these signed and then we'll take a short break.
Yes, there are two copies. There are also, I'll start these with Amy.
Three hundred and what?
Your additional, your Christmas stuff.